They get out of quarters very fast. They're faster than our old apparatus. The reliability is way up because the old apparatus, we're getting old and required a lot of maintenance.
L.A. City Fire Chief Ralph Torrazas says ARFs have firefighting tools that typical fire trucks don't have, like 54-foot-long booms. These booms can pierce into planes like a needle, then maneuver in hard-to-reach spaces like a surgical scope. The vehicles are also equipped with powerful fire suppression agents like Halitron and Purple K. These agents can douse fuel fires quickly, but could also be harmful to people and electronics. Our firefighters are trained to use them with caution. Sixteen of our firefighters are stationed at LAX at all times, and they're not alone.
There's three other fire stations that surround this airport that do the emergency medical services, the hazardous materials, urban search and rescue, and homeland security. So yes, we believe, and Lawa has supported us, that we are as safe as we've ever been.
The six new ARFs cost around $800,000 each, a bargain, according to fire officials. At LAX, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The old vehicles will be deployed to Ontario and Van Nuys airports. Well, research shows that women make government more transparent, inclusive, and accessible, but too few women serve. Rasha Goel has more on a training program that's helping empower women to be prolific in the public office space.
If you are in it for the right reasons, you can truly make a difference. And I think that's really what stands out in terms of being a woman and being in politics, because that is what we care about.
Assemblymember Ling Ling Chang was among the panelists at the Ready to Run campaign training, which provides tools and encourages women to run for public office. The event was sponsored by Mount St. Mary's University.
This is a nonpartisan campaign training program for women, and it is both women that are ready to run and some of our students who are almost ready to run or thinking about a career in public service.
Attendees received insightful information from elected officials, appointed individuals in public office, and those serving on boards and commissions throughout California. The goal: to empower women to run for office and have representation in state legislature and beyond.
Women currently in the legislature only make up about 25% of the state legislature, but they are 50% of the population.
It's also said women need a little more of a push when it comes to running for public office. California is currently ranked 20th in the nation for women's representation in elected office.
What the research shows us is that women often have to be asked several times to run for office, whereas a man generally has to be asked once, and he'll run for office.
Hopes are that will all change. Ready to Run is held by the university once a year. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
For more information on the program and other training sessions, log on to msmu.edu. While the L.A. City Library hopes a little street cred will go a long way in luring more youth through its doors, Gil Reyes reports on new, limited-edition library cards created by one of L.A.'s famous street artists.
World-renowned street artist Shepherd Ferry reveals the new look of L.A. City Library Cards, a look he co-designed.
It's an incredible honor for me because I really believe in what the library does. The library embodies the principles of education, equality, empowerment.
Ferry collaborated with fellow artist Cleon Peterson to create the work. It's an image of L.A. Central Library in downtown. People can use the free library cards to check out books and so much more.
E-comics, e-magazines, you can take an online course. You can even get an accredited online high school diploma through the library.
Shepherd Ferry is perhaps best known for his Barack Obama Hope poster, seen everywhere during the 2008 presidential campaign. Also famous, Ferry's Obey Giant Street Art. The original sticker depicting wrestling icon Andre the Giant became a counterculture hit nearly 30 years ago. Today, the man who gained fame as an underground artist doesn't mind working within the mainstream to lure more youth to the library.
I come from a very outsider standpoint with street art, punk rock, skateboarding. You do everything you can to change the world to be better, and when you don't have access to the system itself, then you work outside of it. But once you can infiltrate it and make it better from the inside, then that's a great strategy as well.
Go out there, collect something amazing, and if you don't have a library card, and this is the excuse for why you finally get one, then we've accomplished our mission.
There will be 100,000 of these new cards available at all L.A. City Library branches while supplies last. At the L.A. Central Library in downtown, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The L.A. City Library system has 73 branches to choose from. Well, city leaders gathered to remember a dark period in Armenian history. Getting around downtown L.A. may soon get a lot easier, and a neighborhood in South L.A. gets the beauty treatment. All these stories in City B. L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti, L.A. Councilmember Paul Krikorian, and the Armenian community came together at the Armenian Genocide Monument at Bignell Park in Montebello to commemorate the 101st anniversary of the Armenian genocide and to bring awareness to the new threats being faced by the Armenian people in Syria.
But we're also here to make sure that our country steps up to protect people who are facing destruction even today as we speak.
Los Angeles has been a place of refuge, not just for Armenians, but for those fleeing genocide, war, economic deprivation. It's who we are as Los Angeles, a place that breaks walls down, not builds them up.
L.A. Councilmember Jose Huizar took a ride on a Metro bicycle recently through downtown L.A. to promote a new bike-sharing program coming to the area this summer. The city has partnered with Metro for the program, which will bring more than 1,000 bikes to 65 stations by 2016. For a fee, residents, commuters, and tourists will be able to borrow the bikes to get around downtown. They'll also be able to check out the bikes at one station and leave them at another.
It's healthy, it lessens traffic, and here we go. If you don't have a bike, you can come to downtown L.A. and explore the beautiful downtown L.A., the new downtown L.A.
Council District 9 community members, in collaboration with several city departments, including Board of Public Works, held a resource fair and tree-planting event at Manuel Arts High School on Vermont Avenue. Several nonprofits were on hand offering their services to parents, who also helped plant trees. LADWP officials say the new trees will make a big difference in cutting energy use.
The trees reduce the heat, they will reduce the air-conditioned bills for our rate payers because the heat will go down, and DWP benefits because we get to meet our 20% energy efficiency reduction goals that we have to meet by the year 2020.
A new exhibition is unveiled near the Wilshire-Vermont train station, connecting not only commuters, but the community as well. Rasha Goel has more.
It's really great that they're trying to combine all the artwork in here. I feel like that should be done everywhere because it's so important and crucial to people's lives.
Paige Emery, a Los Angeles artist, is among other artists whose work was recently unveiled at the Art of Life Connected exhibit in Koreatown's Wilshire-Vermont residential complex. She was the first-place winner of a competition that was open to artists locally and globally.
The painting is called "In Transit." It's a picture of my friend in the subway, and a Metro bus is going right by her, and everything's kind of moving at the same time. And it's kind of about just being constantly on the move.
250 applicants applied for the competition and submitted their 2D, or two-dimensional, work. Of that, 50 winners were actually chosen, and their work can be seen and highlighted throughout this area. Another artist, Casey Salas, whose Ciclu Via photograph won him second place.
It's amazing. It feels like a stepping stone. This encourages me to keep with photography and submit my work other places.
The contest celebrates the city's diverse cultures. It's also part of an ongoing effort to connect the city's neighborhoods and residents.
For them to have an environment that is enriched in people that care about the looks and aesthetics of this community is very, very exciting.
Art is important in every atmosphere. It's very kind to people, it's very calming, it's inspirational.
And if you feel like owning one, well, these great pieces are also on sale. In Koreatown, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Officials say the Art of Life Connected exhibit will be open to the residents, retail tenants, and the 25,000 people that walk through that courtyard. While the LAPD recognizes reserve officers for distinguished service during its annual gala, this year, a pair of classic TV cops join the list of honorees who've made a difference in people's lives. Here's Gil Reyes with Part III of his special series on the LAPD Reserve Program.
LAPD Chief Charlie Beck helps to honor outstanding men and women from the LAPD Reserve Corps. These are sworn officers who protect and serve as volunteers, mostly in between their real jobs.
400 men and women served Los Angeles Police Department as reserve police officers, and this is just a small way by which we recognize their enormous, enormous contribution to public safety in this city.
The Twice a Citizen Awards took place at the Avalon in Hollywood. It's hosted every year by the Los Angeles Police Reserve Foundation, the Reserve Corps' main financial support since 1984. Carla Amundson is the foundation co-president. Carla's husband, philanthropist William Amundson, also happens to be a reserve.
They have the exact same training as a regular police officer, but they volunteer their time, and they put their lives on the line to help protect the city that we all love.
You know, most reserves work hard, they spend a lot of hours, and there's no pay, so you do it out of the love of the job.
Reserveist Michael Hagan, a retired full-time officer, was recognized as Reserve Officer of the Year for Emergency Operations and Specialized Divisions. Also honored, actor Kent McCord. Though not an officer, the actor co-starred on the classic television drama Adam 12. McCord's portrayal of a dedicated LAPD officer put the department in a positive light and influenced many viewers to join the force as full-timers and reserves. McCord's Adam 12 co-star veteran actor Martin Milner was honored in memoriam. Milner passed away in September. And LAPD Chief Charlie Beck received this year's Friedman Award for his support of the Reserve Program. Chief Beck began his career over 40 years ago as a volunteer LAPD reservist with the Rampart Division. At the Avalon in Hollywood, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Proceeds from the dinner help fund equipment and other expenses for the Reserve Corps. Well, a new play hits a high note in East L.A. One of the most popular artists in electronic dance music will get your heart pumping, and they are ferocious and unextinct at the L.A. Zoo, and you can now see them in all their glory. All this and this week's things to do. Boyle Heights will be the setting for a Cinco de Mayo celebration on the east side of Los Angeles, as Brown Fist Productions presents East Side Heartbeats, a new rock-and-roll musical. East Side Heartbeats tells the fictional story of Jimmy Ramirez, leader of the four-man vocal group The East Side Heartbeats. The production, which runs through May 29th, will be presented on Casa 0101 Theater's main stage. The theater is located at 2102 East First Street in Boyle Heights. For more, visit casas0101.org. The New York Times may have called him "the new face of electronic dance music" in a recent profile, but Ryan Radin, known as Cascady, has been in the trenches of the EDM scene as an original recording artist and in-demand DJ for more than a decade. He has created chart-topping remixes for everyone, from Lady Gaga to Beyoncé, and has performed between 150 and 200 headlining shows a year for the last 10 years, building a name for himself as an innovator of the EDM scene. Theme Live at the Los Angeles Convention Center on Saturday, May 7th. For more, visit cascadymusic.com. A ferocious pack of 17 life-size, lifelike, prehistoric creatures have debuted as part of Dinosaurs: Unextinct at the L.A. Zoo, a new exhibit produced and presented by the Greater Los Angeles Zoo Association. These animatronic dinosaurs, brought to life with electronic brains, take visitors back in time for a colossal adventure, providing a rare chance to discover a lost world from millions upon millions of years ago, while warning about the very real threat of extinction faced today by many endangered species. The exhibit is open now at the L.A. Zoo. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
What if a disaster strikes without warning? What if life as you know it has completely turned on its head? What if everything familiar becomes anything but? Before a disaster turns your family's world upside down, it's up to you to be ready. Get a kit, make a plan, be informed today.
Graffiti removal? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Don't worry, Patty, this isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Sergeants, please notify the members. If you're in your offices, please report to the council chambers so that we can begin our work for today. I want to thank and recognize Mr. Bonin, Harris Dawson, Ms. Martinez, O'Farrell Price, and Rue for being today's members of the On Time Caucus. Members, if you're in your offices, please report to the council chambers so that we can begin our work for today. Okay, sergeants, I need one more so that we can begin. I do want to thank Mr. Bloomingfield, Bonin, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Ms. Martinez, O'Farrell Price, Rue for being members of today's On Time Caucus. I need one more member, please report to the council chambers so that we can begin our work for today. Good morning, good morning, good morning. Shhh. Everybody, please take your seats. It is Friday, March 6th. I want to welcome each and every one of you to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Madam Clerk, I do believe we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Bliscayino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Huizar, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Corretts moves, O'Farrell seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for...
Harris Dawson moves, Sadio seconds, next.
Mr. President, there is a request to receive and file Number 1CIL inasmuch as the liens were paid in full, and to receive and file Number IP inasmuch as the lien was partially rescinded and then paid in full. 1B is continued to May 20th, 2016, and also the department recommends to reduce the lien for 1J to $2,063.78 due to partial payment.
Okay, thank you very much. So without objection, that will be the order. Continue.
Mr. President, Items 1 through 3 are items noted for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on 1 and 2.
Okay, let's hold those two items, let's move to Item 3. Let's prepare to vote, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Okay, thank you. Continue.
Mr. President, Items 4 through 9 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Members, any specials? I do not see any. Let's prepare to vote on these items, Items 4 through 9. Madam Clerk, please, or Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Okay, let's move on to the next set of items.
Mr. President, Items 10 through 12 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Mr. Fuentes. Okay, we will continue. Item 12, unless there's an objection, until May 20th. That should be two weeks from now, correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Every now and then I get one right. Okay, let's hold Item 10. And what about Item 11? Can we vote on that?
Mr. President, Cards on Items 10, 11, and 12.
Okay, so let's hold those items. So that brings us where?
That brings the council to presentations, items called Special or General.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Mr. Fuentes at this point in time for a very important presentation. Mr. Fuentes, the floor is yours.
Good morning, colleagues. Help me in welcoming today and honoring this fantastic group of women behind me with a round of applause, please. Colleagues, these women represent a very important group in Silmar. They're mentors, they're leaders, they're supporters, activists, and they've been residents in one way or the other of Silmar for decades. These women represent a group celebrating its 75th anniversary of the Silmar Women's Club. This group of amazing women have been doing tremendous work together for many, many years. The group in of itself has been around since 1941, and it began as a small circle of women who began to work together to make sure that they could acquaint themselves with one another, but also the neighborhoods of Silmar. And they wanted to make sure that they did this in a way that fostered a spirit of friendliness and helpfulness in the community, which is what we all endeavor to do. Many years later, that group had established itself, so much so that they went ahead and got a not-for-profit status, and they made their mission working for the betterment of the residents of Silmar. The Silmar Women's Club has awarded thousands of dollars The Silmar Women's Club has awarded thousands of dollars to students of Silmar High School and Los Angeles Mission College through their annual fundraisers, including the Spring Fashion Show and luncheon taking place tomorrow at the Odyssey Restaurant in Council District 12 in Mr. Englander's district. Through fundraisers and donations, the Silmar Women's Club has provided over $15,000 in scholarships to students in Silmar. These women have been role models for our younger generation, they're active, they're involved, and they're experienced, and they're sharing all of that with the residents and the community of Silmar. So give them a big round of applause. Jodeen Finch, everybody.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is an honor to be accepting this award on behalf of the Silmar Women's Club. My name is Jodeen Finch. I am the president of the Silmar Women's Club and have held that position approximately five different years. Several of the ladies would have loved to have been here today but could not for various reasons. And I want to start out with what is a volunteer? A volunteer is someone who donates their time and energy to a worthy cause without monetary compensation. The Silmar Women's Club has been an organization of volunteers for 75 years. Imagine, if you will, when those original eight women gathered at a friend's home to start an organization to volunteer their time and energy in helping the community of Silmar. Did they have any idea their volunteering would continue to this day? We wonder if they thought about the future of their club and how they would feel knowing that their volunteering catapulted into our modern-day club with members who continue to have their original mindset and are still going strong after 75 years. The Silmar Women's Club members come from various walks of life, varying ages from 16 being our youngest to 98 being our oldest, and varying careers, but they have one important thing in common: they all volunteer their time for the benefit of the students and other organizations, helping to better the community of Silmar. The symbol then-is-now was a true circle, no breaks, no points, and no corners. The objective of the Silmar Women's Club for 75 years has been a social communion for its members, a discussion of subjects of common interest which would serve as intellectual uplift but in no way conflict with personal views. No gossiping and hard feelings should enter its bounds, but all things be taken in good faith as coming from the circle. In closing, as we look to the future, we will continue to help the students of Silmar reach their goals of a better life through higher education, and hopefully, our club will continue for another 75 years. Thank you.
Now, thank you, thank you. Just give them another round of applause.
Congratulations to the Silmar Women's Club. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles, we have this beautiful certificate honoring their 75 years. Give them another round of applause, everybody. Thank you. Let's take some photos in the back.
Again, thank you, Mr. Fuentes. I'm going to take the liberty of doing something at this point as the president of the council. Now, I know I'm going to probably tick her off a little bit on this, but we have a very, very important visitor with us today, probably the longest-tenured African-American elected official in the state of California. From time to time, we have special visitors, and I like to present them to the folk that are here, to the people that are on television. This young lady has been described as a fighter. I beg to differ, I think she's a winner. Ladies and gentlemen, please do me a very, very, very big favor in giving a round of applause to one of the most effective members of Congress that we in this state have ever had, that is our own Maxine Waters. Please give her a round of applause. You are welcome, and if you like, you can come up here and sit in my chair, all right? All right, with that said, let's... Madam Clerk, I think it's a request to reconsider item 9. Is that the...? Mr. Price, I think it's item 9. So let's quickly vote on reconsideration of item 9. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, and we'll hold that for a moment? All right, so with that said, Mr. Sadio, I was going to see if you were prepared with your presentation. So at this point in time, Mr. Sadio, the floor is yours.
You're a council member. Mr. President, before I begin, let me also acknowledge what a great honor it is to have the presence of Maxine Waters. She has been a role model for all of us. Her commitment to social justice is unbreakable, and she has demonstrated through the years the importance of meshing a commitment to social justice and politics and using the political arena as one of the forums for us to achieve that, and it's a great honor to have her here with us. She has been a role model for me since the beginning of my adult life and career, and her efforts, I always never hesitate to repeat this, her efforts as championing a cause as she did to dismantle nothing less than apartheid, as she was an assemblywoman, got the state legislature to take a resolution, got the university to take a resolution, and began to dismantle apartheid, brick by brick, in the 80s. It's just one of the most extraordinary acts of political courage and political leadership, and I'm very proud to have her here with us today.
Now, we are all very proud to have her with us. So, back to you, sir.
Yes, well, I think it's quite appropriate that she's here with us, a great champion of those fighting for justice. You know, yesterday was Cinco de Mayo, and in this country, there's some confusion. People begin to think that it's like St. Patrick's Day, and that it's the day that people begin to start the beer bus, and the drinking, and the margaritas, et cetera, and that then we take that all the way through to September 16th. But nothing could be further from the truth. In fact, today, it's probably more important that we recognize what Cinco de Mayo is, and it is a celebration of about 150 years ago, an incredible battle. Mexico was being occupied, we're going to hear more from our speaker on this, and it was a battle of 5,000 ill-equipped, ill-prepared indigenous mestizos and Sapohtec Indians who defeated a better-trained and better-armed French army on May 5th. And so it became to be known as the Battle of Puebla and represent a symbol, an early symbol of Mexican unity and patriotism. And it took place both here and in Mexico, and we'll hear more about that, and I want to introduce our speaker in a minute because he is the authority on this, he's written a book on this, he is the authority on that subject matter. But before I continue, I also want to introduce Lourdes Juárez, he's the president of Unión de Poblanos and Exterior, oops, Ex, along with other club members for the great work they do on behalf of Mexican immigrants. There is a practice that takes place here, as immigrants leave Mexico and come here, contrary to what has been alleged, to come here and work the most difficult jobs in the fields and in our factories and our homes, they form hometown associations, and those hometown associations are identified by their state, and today, we are happy to have them here with us. We also have Adriana Argans from the Mexican consulate, Ricardo Herrera from Mi Casa es Puebla, and none other than the honorable Dr. David Hayes Baltista, who yesterday was honored with an award from Mexico, an award known as the Altley Award, which means essentially Pathfinder. And the Altley Award is given to a person of Mexican-American heritage, or Mexican heritage, who lives here in the United States, but who is honored for their contributions to the Mexican community in its entirety. And with that, let me bring forward, from UCLA, Dr. David Hayes Baltista, who will share remarks on the meaning and significance of Cinco de Mayo.
Doctor? Thank you. Thank you. About 200 years ago, when the city council reported to Mexico City, Father Hidalgo declared independence of Mexico from Spain, and importantly, for this council, he also declared racial equality and civil rights and the abolition of slavery, and that was the law of the land here during the city council's forbearance. When the United States took over California, Latinos went to the Constitutional Convention, and we wrote into the Constitution, in fact, the same abolition of slavery, racial equality, and civil rights, and by the way, we did it in Spanish as well as in English. California's entry as a free state upset the Missouri Compromise, the balance between the free and the slave states. The Civil War broke out almost inevitably 10 years later, Latinos lined up behind Lincoln, the United States, freedom, democracy, racial equality. The French went into Mexico to get rid of the Mexican Constitution, put in a monarch who would then make an alliance with the rebelling Confederate slave states. That is why when they were stopped short at the Battle of Puebla, unable to make Mexico City, just as General Robert E. Lee was beginning to lick General McClellan outside the gates of Richmond, Latinos received the news here, and they were very overjoyed by the fact that the Army of Freedom and Democracy, they happened to be at Puebla, won a big battle finally, gave Lincoln one more year to find a general who could finally win the battle, General Mede at Gettysburg. Latinos immediately took to the streets and throughout the Civil War, used Cinco de Mayo as a means of saying to the public, here is where we stand on the issues of the Civil War, we oppose slavery, we support freedom, we oppose white supremacy, we support racial equality, and we want to take Cinco de Mayo back from the beer companies unless we start celebrating Cinco de Mayo for social justice. Thank you very much.
I don't... Let me introduce Lourdes Juárez, but there's nothing else for me to say after that.
Good morning, all, and thank you so much for making this city a wonderful city. Back in Puebla, everyone's knowing that this city has opened the doors for all the poblanos in not only Los Angeles but in the United States. It is a great honor to always be there and be here and have the same, the freedom here that, the freedom that we have here, it's thanks to all of you guys and the leadership here. We know we're an example for the world, and it is a great honor to be Angelina and also Angelina de Puebla. Thank you so much.
Members, just let me close by saying that yesterday, we had an incredible celebration at the Mexican consulate. Our council general has been elevated to ambassador status and will be representing Mexico in Washington, D.C., and that is Carlos Sada. We will be receiving a new council general, currently stationed in Dublin, he'll be returning, and will be stationed here in Los Angeles, he is also of the ambassador status. That reflects a, it's a very significant change because it reflects the seriousness with which Mexico looks at our current presidential elections. There is great concern when hatred and racism and anti-immigration and anti-Mexican sentiment is expoused every day on a daily basis, 7:24, 3:65. It raises great concern for all of us of Mexican heritage, us Americans of Mexican heritage, and it's important for us to be vigilant for those who are here aspiring to be the president and relying upon hate and xenophobia and racism as their vehicle for that position. And so, this is a significant day. We spoke much yesterday about building bridges and not walls, and this is part of that process. It's much more serious than simply celebrating with beer and margaritas. So, thank you for your presence and your attention to this matter, and with that, let me present on the 54th, or the 154th Battle of Puebla, this recognition to our delegation.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Madam Clerk, we're going to move on to item 2. Madam President, item 2 is called special for cards. Mr. Walsh, item 2.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, tweeting at Hollywood Dems, and also J. Walsh Confidential Blogging. This concerns an easement for street and sidewalk purposes to help a developer. I just want to see, this is a, I'm not going to take the full two minutes. It's a great honor to speak in front of Maxine Waters, and I hope she comes up under public comment and talks about Donald Trump.
That concludes cards on this item. Madam Clerk, can we open the roll? Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Item passes, let's move on to item 11. Madam President, item 11 was called special for cards. Mr. Walsh, item 11.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns removing various properties from the rent escrow account program when you do an excellent job. You do an excellent job for renters, never had any problems, and I moved here in 1966. You're doing an excellent job. The big problem is that you won't show my face on television. You'll notice, Ms. Honorable Congresswoman, when the public comes up, they have a long shot. When they're up at this microphone, they get a nice close-up.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. That concludes cards on this item. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll and tally up the votes.
13 ayes.
Item passes, let's move on to item 1. Madam President, item 1 was called special for cards, but please note that item 1FKN was continued to May 20th, 2016. Okay, without objection. The first speaker is Jeff Nadell. Jeff Nadell on item 1K, are you here? Jeff? Nadell? I see no one from, with that name, Mr. Walsh, on item 1.
John Walsh, these are fines to rent, people who own property, rental property, nuisance abatement. This is an excellent program, they're liens, and what happens is if your apartment unit that you're renting is not in code, you're warned, and if you don't pay it, pay the lien or, then the money, the rent, doesn't go to the bad landlord, it goes to the city, and then they have to figure out how to get the money back by coming down here. There are some false liens, but generally, this is a very, very good program. You don't find it in Republican cities like Glendale.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. That concludes cards on item 1. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tally up the votes.
12 ayes.
Item passes.
This morning, I'm here to report that the Coliseum Commission enthusiastically supports the sports arena redevelopment project that is before you today. USC and LAFC have complied with every request asked of them by the Coliseum Commission. The Coliseum Commission has approved the EIR and all of the related documents. The sports arena has served its community for well over half a century, and it is now time for the sports arena to pass the baton of community service onto the LAFC stadium. It is my hope that all of the recommended actions on today's agenda receive your unanimous support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Will Strickland. Are you here? Will Strickland on item 10? There is no one here by that name. John Walsh, item 10, sir. Followed by Eric Previn.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. This is what's left of the Farmers Field debacle, where we were going to get the team, and they were going to rebuild the convention center. Millions and millions of dollars were spent, and it ended up in the rat hole. So, certified Los Angeles Memorial Sports Arena, and it's a redevelopment project. Well, you know, there is no more redevelopment. We destroyed redevelopment. It's gone. Just a few projects, and it was the worst thing on earth, and Jerry Brown did an excellent job of getting rid of it. And I'd just like to say, you know, when most VIPs come here, they come to the beginning of the meeting, they get their picture on television, and they leave. Not Maxine Waters. She's sitting here and watching it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Eric Previn, followed by Lucinda Starlet and Fernando Varela.
Thank you. It is Eric Previn from CD2. And I imagine this is an exciting time, as the group that is in charge of running the Coliseum and the stadium, the big Olympic stadium, is now going to be modifying the old sports arena into a soccer stadium, which is going to produce some short-term jobs, I believe 1,200 or so, and then another 1,800 if I've got it right, permanent jobs, which I think is very exciting. And we're going to be expecting approximately $103 million in tax revenue for the operation of the facility. And I think it's 83 million, actually, it's 103 million in, on the construction and 83 on an ongoing basis, I think. This is, this is big business. This is Exposition Park. USC, our trusted partners, have a strong hand here that they play. Those who remember the history of this arrangement, remember that there were some transparency issues with the Coliseum Commission. I would say it was more than that. There was wrongdoing, and there was, they avoided a trial, thanks to Max Huntsman, who was the DA at the time. And all the public officials who had their hands all over it were sort of pleased with that outcome, because none of that dirt came out that they, that they had the responsibility there. A judge made a finding that they were in violation of the open government laws. I forget the guy's name. He made a finding on my behalf as well at one point. But I would just simply say that going forward, as these decisions, and there's a lot of positive aspects to this. I don't know about 20,000 seats of the facility being arranged for the upper tier. That seems a bit high, and there does seem to be a lot of retail. I mean, this is going to be like an extension of Staples. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, if we could have the next speaker come forward, identify yourself.
Hello, I'm Fernando Varela.
Yes, go right ahead.
Good morning. For many years, the community has been debating what to do with this sports arena. The arena is deteriorating, rarely used, and surrounded by inaccessible gated space. The LAFC stadium project is the absolute best solution imaginable. The aged sports arena will be replaced with a privately financed world-class stunning soccer stadium that will lead the revitalization of Expo Park. The project will also add significantly more public space, such as the plaza facing the Coliseum. I was actually at a large fundraising event last, a few weeks ago at Expo Park, and we were forced to use Christmas Tree Lane in front of the sports arena, which is closely surrounded by busy streets. So, plaza space would be very useful. I should also mention that not only would this project build upon the incredible sports heritage of the sports arena, but it would also add to the park's incredible catalog of museums by adding the World Football Museum, that would draw tourism from around the world. I strongly support the LAFC stadium project, and I hope you do as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sterrett.
Good morning, council members. Cindy Sterrett from Latham &amp; Watkins, on behalf of LA Football Club. We are so pleased and proud that this privately financed project is now here to bring a new MLS team to the city of Los Angeles. We appreciate very much the recommendation from the Plum Committee and the hard work of the city attorney and the staff that's followed on hearings by the Planning Commission, by the Coliseum Commission, by the State of California. This is a wonderful project. All aspects of it have been thoroughly analyzed and approved, and we're delighted that it's going forward for the city of Los Angeles. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. If I could get Salvador Reyes, I believe this is Richard Escutia Irving Pollak, please come forward. And if I called your name, come line up behind this gentleman. Yes, sir, identify yourself.
Good morning, city council. My name is Salvador Reyes. I'm a longtime resident of the city of Los Angeles. I've been in support of this program and project since inception. Last, last I heard was that this proposal was coming to the city hall for final approval. I also represent the original members of the season seat holders in my small space, which is one seat there at the sports arena. But I'm a longtime supporter of soccer and all the programs and all the facets that cover this beautiful game. I just, I'm just here to tell you that each and one of you sitting here today are a part of LAFC. This is your club. This is not our club. This is not their club. This is the city of Los Angeles's football club. So, with that said, I would like to give my original scarf to you, sir, as a, kind of as a kind gesture to city hall welcoming you to the Los Angeles Football Club. Thank you.
Thank you. We're honored. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Mr. Escutia? And then I'm going to ask, is this Irving Pollak?
No, that is my father. We both are Richard Escutia, so.
Okay.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I am strongly in support of the LAFC stadium project, and the reason for is because there are two things that I cannot ignore. That, the first of them is that they are offering several thousand permanent jobs as well as several thousand temporary jobs. It cannot be ignored. I mean, with so many people that are in dire straits in the city of LA, they could help them out. And I also see that the process has been given by, by the people heading this project. They've been, they've been doing everything by the dot, by the book, and especially since it's been privately funded, no tax dollars have been used. I think it's a great opportunity here that you guys, all of you have in front of you. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, if I could have the next speaker come forward, and please identify yourself, sir.
Good morning. I'm Richard Escutia, father. Honorable panel, progress comes at a price. However, that price doesn't cost taxpayers money at all. However, it's a somewhat difficult transition, but the results are nothing but positive gains. Therefore, I am in favor of the LAFC project because, as well as other things, the Figueroa Corridor verification must not stop. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, do I have Irving and Marlene Pollak? Irving and Marlene Pollak? Okay, then that concludes a comment on this issue. I now defer to Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, before your day, items nine and 10, which will give the LA Football Club the green light to build a world-class soccer stadium right here in our backyard at Exposition Park. For too long, South LA has been overlooked as a place to invest. Folks are finally taking notice that this is a vibrant community with a rich history and culture and with lots to offer. I can tell you firsthand that my constituency is incredibly excited for this project. All you have to do is visit any of the parks in the area at any times of the day, night, morning, noon, and night, and you'll find soccer enthusiasts of all ages taking part in this globally beloved sport. This $250,000 investment is unprecedented in the U.S. and will reactivate an often overlooked concrete jungle on the southeast corner of Exposition Park. It will be the first open-air stadium built in 50 years, providing spectators with an unobstructed view of our beautiful downtown skyline. Complete with a 22,000-person stadium, shops, restaurants, and a soccer museum, this project will be the southern gem in the sports and entertainment corridor that runs along Figueroa and includes the Coliseum, the Galen Center, Staples, LA Live, all the way up to Dodger Stadium. This is truly one of the biggest economic development projects in South LA and this city has seen in decades. And in a council district where we face the highest rates of unemployment, highest rates of dropouts, this is a shot in the arm that we need. With a commitment to 40% local hire and more than 3,000 jobs, I commend the LA Football Club's pledge to the community. In addition to the 40% hire, they've committed $4 million to invest back into the local community. I'd like to thank the football club and its owners, Tom and Henry, I see in the audience. Thank you for your foresight and for seeing the potential that this community could offer. There is a technical members that has been passed around, and I ask for your aye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. I mishandled a couple of cards here, the cards of the owners, so I could get Henry and Tom to please come up and say a few words. Henry Nguyen and Tom Penn, please come forward. It's good to see you guys again.
President Wesson, Councilman Price, esteemed members of the city council, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present this morning. My name is Henry Nguyen. I'm the managing partner of the Los Angeles Football Club. My colleagues and I at LAFC are extremely excited and honored to have this opportunity to bring the world's game, soccer, right into the heart of the most diverse, creative, and innovative city in the world. This was our vision from the beginning, and we're so excited to be laying the foundation of our club and our organization and be a part of such a rich history of Los Angeles and a rich history of sports here. We really wanted to create something special for all Angelenos and really be something that is, mixes with the remarkable history and social fabric of this great city. We want to bring the cathedral of soccer right here into Exposition Park, as Councilman Price said, be a part of the South LA reinvigoration and revitalization and part of the Figueroa Corridor. We'll create thousands of jobs and bring the people of this community and great city together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to echo the overall spirit of gratitude here, council president, Councilman Price, all members of the city council. Thank you to Mayor Garcetti and his office, to the city planning department and their staff, to the associated city staff. To have this path go as quickly as it did and as smooth as it did, we are, we're mindful of that and grateful of that. We're also well aware of the responsibility that comes with this opportunity. This is precious real estate, and this is a precious place, and we're going to bring the world's city to the heart of the world's game, and the vision is to unite this diverse city around their love of this game. So, thank you for that opportunity, and we pledge and promise to do you proud.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, Salvador, I want to thank you again for the scarf. I did receive cards on this, but the, they came in too late. We were already engaged in the conversation. With that said, Mr. Price, I'm going to ask our clerk to open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Sadio, would, are you prepared to move forward with the next presentation? Because we, then I'll defer to you. And again, I want to congratulate Mr. Price and the community. Mr. Sadio, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, colleagues, please join me and Councilmember Ryu in honoring the registered nurses of the United Nurses Association of California, Union of Healthcare Professionals, for the quality of care they provide here in the greater Los Angeles area. Today is the first day of Nurses Week, a week that gives an invaluable opportunity for us to celebrate the contributions of RNs everywhere. National Nurses Week begins on May 6, marking National RN Recognition Day and culminating on May 12 with the birthday of Florence Nightingale, who is standing tall and proud in Lincoln Park in the First District. We have reinvested in that statue, and it is now there for the world to see. We commemorate her with her own, very own statue, and we're proud to have her in the First District. National Nurses Week recognizes the significant contributions nurses make every day in our lives. Nurses are the first line of defense in the prevention of illness and injury, and they champion and promote the health of our nation. There are close to 3.1 million registered nurses in the United States, with over 390,000 practicing here in the state of California. This morning, we begin the celebration early with the dedication of a bench and a plaque in honor of Florence Nightingale, donated to the city of Los Angeles by United Nurses Association of California, known as UNAC, Union of Healthcare Professionals. This bench is positioned so that nurses and the public can contemplate the park's lakeside statue in Lincoln Park. UNAC, Union of Healthcare Professionals, represents over 26,000 registered nurses and other healthcare professionals, including optometrists, pharmacists, physical and occupational and speech therapists, case managers, nurse midwives, social workers, clinical lab scientists, PAs, physician assistants, and nurse practitioners. As healthcare leaders and trusted advisors on health issues, we thank our friends from the union and congratulate the official launch of Nurses Day. And most importantly, we thank all our nurses for their continued efforts to improve patient outcomes in the ever-evolving health field. Now, I'd like to turn this over to David Ryu, but before that, I just, as you know, Mr. President, my public life began representing nurses at Local 660, and we had... National Nurses Week recognizes the significant contributions nurses make every day in our lives. Nurses are the first line of defense in the prevention of illness and injury, and they champion and promote the health of our nation. There are close to 3.1 million registered nurses in the United States, with over 390,000 practicing here in the state of California. This morning, we begin the celebration early with the dedication of a bench and a plaque in honor of Florence Nightingale, donated to the City of Los Angeles by United Nurses Association of California, known as UNAC, Union of Healthcare Professionals. This bench is positioned so that nurses and the public can contemplate the park's lakeside statue in Lincoln Park. UNAC, Union of Healthcare Professionals, represents over 26,000 registered nurses and other healthcare professionals, including optometrists, pharmacists, physical and occupational and speech therapists, case managers, nurse midwives, social workers, clinical lab scientists, PAs, physician assistants, and nurse practitioners. As healthcare leaders and trusted advisors on health issues, we thank our friends from the union and congratulate the official launch of Nurses Day, and most importantly, we thank all our nurses for their continued efforts to improve patient outcomes in the ever-evolving health field. Now, I'd like to turn this over to David Ryu, but before that, I just, as you know, Mr. President, my public life began representing nurses at Local 660, and we had, was it 25 years ago? An incredible strike at about this time.
Don't age us.
Yeah. Well, we were much, much too young for those jobs then. So I'm just very excited and pleased to be here with nurses who serve us every single day and who are underappreciated for the incredible work they do.
That they do.
At a critical time of our lives. Thank you.
Mr. Ryu.
Good morning, Mr. President and fellow council members. Thank you. Today, I'm honored to join Councilmember Gil Sadio in highlighting National Nurses Week with the special recognition of Florence Nightingale, who was a pioneer and a reformer for public health. Florence Nightingale was a nurse who served during the Crimean War. Her experiences sparked worldwide healthcare reforms and led to the creation of modern nursing. Nurses and healthcare professionals play a critical role in our communities, at the hospital, at home, and in the field. Nurses and healthcare professionals at times are the first responders to crisis situations. They're the brave and work, they are brave and work tirelessly to treat all communities. I know firsthand the importance of nurses. My mother was a nurse. Prior to becoming on the City Council, I worked for a mental health hospital with 72 acute psychiatric beds. And all healthcare professionals, for that matter, anyone who's ever been in a hospital and especially an emergency room, knows the widely-known secret, that nurses are not only vital, but they run the entire place. Doctors come and go, but nurses stay. And I have personally witnessed the tireless dedication and passion of nurses. Moreover, I am proud to be a good friend of the United Nurses Association of California, Union of Healthcare Professionals, who are fierce advocates for public health. They represent the thousands of healthcare workers who make medical treatment a reality for us every day. Thank you for all your commitment to advocating for public health and for those who are most vulnerable in our community. Thank you.
My name is Denise Duncan, and it's a pleasure to be here. I am the president of United Nurses Associations of California, Union of Healthcare Professionals, AFSMI. As you've just heard, we dedicated a bench this morning in Lincoln Park that overlooks the statue of the Florence Nightingale. Florence Nightingale is very important to nurses, not only because of the history that she put forth so many years ago, but because of the work that she did clearly defines who we are today. You might find it interesting to know that Florence was an advocate for science, for evidence-based research, for nursing judgment, all of which are the cornerstones of how we practice. The most important thing that Florence Nightingale did was call upon nurses to advocate for patients. There isn't legislation, regulation, code of conduct, a handbook, or a mission statement that does not call out the importance of nurses in advocating for patients to this day. The plaque on this bench in Lincoln Park reads, "In honor of Florence Nightingale, the founder of the nursing profession." If Florence Nightingale was standing up here today with us toe-to-do, she would be a contemporary. She would be talking to us about the need to decrease infection rates in hospitals. She would be talking about the importance of allowing patients to die in peace and with dignity. Her work over 100, well over 100 years ago, was precedent-setting and guides who we are and what we do. I'm proud to be a registered nurse, and on this great day, I'm proud to represent registered nurses. Can't believe I'm so emotional. Who do work tirelessly, who advocate for patient safety, and fight for things that we never thought we could be victorious in, such as the Affordable Care Act. On behalf of the UNAC officers and staff, we are pleased to be able to speak for this profession and honor nurses on Nurses Day, those that have gone before us, those that stand beside us today and that hope to be nurses in the future.
Thank you. You need to get in the front to put that little woman in the front. Take care for your visitors.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure. Thank you.
Again, thank you all so very much, and congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Sadio and Mr. Ryu. Mr. Harris Dawson, I have to say that being an individual who is vertically challenged, I happen to notice a lot of tall people enter this chambers. It's a good thing we don't have a height limit because we'd have to change it. So I have a feeling that this, Mr. Spindler, this is a very important presentation. I am not going to allow you to disrupt it. Do it again, and I will remove you. So if you don't have anything good to say about Crenshaw High School, then you can sit down and say nothing at all. Now, with that said, for a very important introduction, Marquise Harris Dawson, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and members. We're very excited this morning to be joined again by students from Crenshaw High. You will remember, I will use this opportunity to remind you that a few months ago, we honored the Crenshaw High School softball team that went 14-0 last year. Today, we are proud to welcome Crenshaw High School's basketball team that has won the L.A. City Sectional Division One Championship. Let's give them a big round of applause. They also boast at Crenshaw High School, the City Section Division One Player of the Year Lamar Harris, and the City Section Division One Coach of the Year Ed Waters. Let's give them both a big round of applause. This is a very exciting moment in the history of Crenshaw High School, founded in 1968. They've been standing at this lectern as champions many, many years before any of us were here and many, many years going forward. One of the exciting things about this team is that our Player of the Year and most of the talent on this team, Mr. Fuentes, our juniors are below. So you can expect us to see us again, Coach. We might be back here next year, right?
Absolutely.
All right. You will notice that I am flanked by Coach Waters, and if you recognize the last name, it is no coincidence. He is the son of one of our most senior political leaders and civic leaders in all of the state of California, a champion of, the people's champion in our community, but all over the United States, an ambassador for the social justice movement from Los Angeles all over the world, the one and only Congress member, Maxine Waters. Coach Waters, in addition, in addition to being awesome in almost every way, she happens to be the mother of Coach Waters. And so we want to welcome her with a big L.A. City Hall Happy Mother's Day, and here are a few words from our Congresswoman, Maxine Waters.
Congresswoman, welcome. Welcome.
Thank you so very much for that very warm welcome and introduction. President Wesson, I thank you for your leadership. I sat here and I reminisced a bit about the time that I spent in City Hall as the chief deputy to Councilman David Cunningham. This is a beautiful chamber. You're doing a wonderful job, and I'm so very proud of both your leadership and the leadership of the members of the City Council. I'm here today for a very special occasion, and I want to thank Councilman Harris Dawson for the invitation. He has invited the entire team, basketball team, for Crenshaw High to be here today, along with all of the coaches, their parents, and supporters. And of course, I'm here not as a politician, but as a mom today.
That's right.
And as a mom, I'm extremely proud of all of these young men. They are wonderful. They are talented. They are winners. As it was mentioned by the councilmen, they are the Division One Champions that won the citywide championship. And of course, as I have just said, I'm so proud of them, but you know, I'm very proud of the head coach of that team. The head coach, the head coach of that team is my son, Edward K. Waters. He attended Crenshaw High, he graduated from Crenshaw High, and he followed in the footsteps of the very famous coach, Mr. Willie West, who won so many championships. So he is here today not only to present his team, but to thank all of you for your support, and thank you for not only what you do for this city, but your support for education and Crenshaw High. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the council. Thank you for having us here, and a very special thank you to Councilman Dawson for your staff and all the work that they did to have us out here. I want to assure the council, had I not won that game, I would not be standing here today. Crenshaw High, as the councilman mentioned, was founded in 1968, and between 1968 and 1997, the Crenshaw basketball team won 16 city championships and eight state championships. But the last one was in 1997. And so before this championship here, there was a 19-year drought before there was a championship, and only one man had ever received a championship trophy, Willie West. So I'm only the second coach in the history of the school. Ironically, member of many of the young men that were very instrumental in us winning were actually born in 1997. So there was some type of connection of destiny to this whole thing. I'm not here alone. Before I just tell you and introduce you to all the members of the basketball team, there's some very important people here that not only help me with what I do, but are bringing Crenshaw back to the prominence that it's had through the years, not only academically and athletically. First, I did bring some people to vote. I have some parents here, and I just want to acknowledge them right quick. If the parents would raise their hands so they can be seen. Our first parents I'm going to acknowledge is Ms. Rosalynn Wright, mother of Ryan Campbell, Ms. Helen Kendrick, mother of Kris Kendrick, Ms. Peace Embekwe, mother of Stephen and Kevin, and I believe Ms. Iris Fuller. Are you here? Is Ms. Fuller here? No? And then Ramon, is your mom here? Raise your hand here. Ms. Wagner, Ms. Wagner is here. Did I miss any parents? These people are very important. These are people who support me. And then we have staff here. Our principal, who is going crazy because he was not able to be here, but he's handling businesses, going to make our school better. But he did send our assistant principal of athletics, Mr. Quinn. And the person that has always made sure that the basketball program is able to operate in a way that I have some freedom to do what I do, somebody's been very important to my tenure here. Where's our athletic director, Ms. Bernita Sutton? And then the leader and head of our business magnet and entrepreneur magnet, Mr. Maynard Brown, who was alumni at Crenshaw. Where's the person that's supervising us today? Ms. Stacy? Ms. Stacy, raise your hand here. Ms. Stacy is one of our lead campus aides that are here. And then I have our community advisor, Mr. Frosty Mack. Where are you, Mr. Mack? Keep standing right here. And then finally, my coaches are here who've been with me. Coach Locke, who's been with me for 12 years. Coach Locke, raise your hand. And Coach Gibbons is here, who just joined my staff this year. Raise your hand, Coach Gibbons. And lastly, Mr. President, I have a member of the BET Academy, a student who's had some work to do here today that I'll tell Councilman Dawson about. Where are you at, Mr. Clark? Raise your hand. Thank you. Now, I'm going to quickly, if you would bear with me, try to go through these young men that are here.
Go right ahead, Coach.
Thank you so much. I'm going to turn around and look. First, our point guard, who has been first team all city, two years in a row, Mr. Kris Young man that just joined us this year, transferred over, made a good decision, Mr. Aaron Buckley. A young man who's been with us since the ninth grade. He got his first B at Crenshaw. He had never gotten a B, and he argued with the teacher. He had always had a 4.0. He's always hoovering around, anywhere from a 3.0 to a 4.0, Mr. Ramon Wagner. This young man was not supposed to make it, came to us through the ninth grade, went the long way around, but we stuck with him. He has two more brothers that we're going to try to develop, Mr. Shane Seymour. Sophomore, Mr. Kevin Embekwe. We're expecting a lot of things from him next year. Tenth grader, one of those persons Mr. Dawson was talking about, will be back next year, Kevin Embekwe. Thank you. This is a player of the year. I don't know how he got player of the year, but this is a player of the year. An outstanding young man who really turned himself around, began to understand what he needed to do in the classroom, is doing that now, and then obviously performed on the basketball court, Mr. Lamar Harris. This young man has been with us the longest in the program, Mr. Terrell Garrett. He fought through a very tough family situation this year and performed at the highest level. We're really going to miss you, young man. This young man is another man that made a great decision to come over to Crenshaw. I won't say where he came from, but we beat up on them so bad that he decided to come in and join us. His mother is here with him today. They've been just an outstanding asset, not only to our school on the basketball field, but his mother, who is an advocate for parents. This is Mr. Ryan Campbell. Here's another, Embekwe, but this is a ninth grader who's going to be with us for the next three years, Mr. What is your name? Udu? Steven, Steven Embekwe. We look for great things out of him. Thank you. He once was lost, and now he's found. We got him back into the fray. Kevin Kennard, who will be a senior next year, but another young man that'll be joining us. Thank you for everything, Kevin. Now, he got on the bus. He's trying to make the team for next year, but I'm going to go ahead and acknowledge that he's, that is here, Mr. Hakima Morgan. Thank you. This young man had never played basketball in his life, and I really kept him around, not only for his effort, but because of his character. Jimmy, thank you so much for joining us this year, and we hope that what we've done with you has helped you. Thank you so much. Did I get everybody? Did I get everybody? Okay, Daniel?
Yeah, come on.
Daniel was walking around tall for no reason, so he didn't go the basketball route. He was with us for a couple of years, but he's here representing the BET magnet along with Mr. Brown. He's going to talk to Councilman Dawson and my mother about some things, so I told him to come on up, but I just wanted to acknowledge that he was here. Did I get everybody? Councilman, Mr. President, and the members, thank you again. I see an alumni, Mr. Kern Price. Councilman Price, we'd like to see you on campus, come to some games next year. Councilman Dawson, thank you again for having us here. Mr. President, thank you for your patience. Council members, thank you for your patience. Hopefully, we'll see you next year. Thank you.
Mr. Harris Dawson, Mr. Harris Dawson, I just have to say this. I was here, Coach, when you were brought in and introduced to this body, and we knew then that one day that you would be back with the big trophy. then that one day that you would be back with the big trophy. So this does not surprise me at all. So again, on behalf of the Council, I want to thank you as well. But what I didn't know when all of these tall people entered the chambers is that you were going to have somebody with you that I have loved for an awfully long time, an individual who was a very close personal friend to my family and my cousin, a woman who played on the softball team with my wife, who led the league in home runs, and that's Roz. Roz, and your son, your son, young Campbell, how's Malcolm? I remember the first one. Anyway, congratulations and such a treat to see. Do you still swing a bat? Anyway, congratulations and a welcome, welcome surprise. And I have to say this to you, Mr. Harris Dawson, the most difficult thing that I ever did was coach a woman softball team. I did it one year.
Excellent, excellent. Well, thank you all so much, members, and one more time, let's give a big round of applause.
Yes, indeed.
To the Crenshaw High School and parents and families and our Congress member. It's truly, truly a family affair, winning, educating yourself, helping turn young lives around and helping build the kind of community that we all deserve. So again, thank you all for being a part of our community and being winners.
Hey, Mr. Englander, if I can trouble you to maybe wrap this. Mr. Price? Yeah, items nine and ten fourth width. Madam Clerk, where are we now? Is it public comment?
Yes, Mr. President.
Bags, some bags back here.
Richard Robinson, followed by John Walsh, followed by Eric Previn, Jaclyn Richardson, and Wayne. Those are all the public comment cards I have. Come up in any order as you wish.
John Walsh tweeting at Hollywood Dems. You couldn't see it, but during the ceremony for Crenshaw High where I taught as a substitute several times, there were only six people that showed disrespect to sit here and watch it. And I can tell you, if it had been an Hispanic high school or a white high school, you all would have been here watching in your seat. That shows you your disrespect for one of the last of the black high schools left in the city. Metal detectors all over Hollywood Boulevard at the El Capitan. You can't go to the movies without going through a metal detector. Anybody but Englander, your ballot will be coming. He's a Republican and he came here late because he was picking up a check for his campaign. HollywoodHighlands.org, there's Manhunt for a shooter yesterday. They didn't catch him in Hollywood.
Thank you. It is Eric Previn in the general public comment for 60 seconds. Regarding the budget hearings, it's my understanding that the next five days have been tabled. They'll be in recess, so there'll be a reduction. I think Mr. Kukorim was calculating the amount of public comment that would be taken, but it's been reduced by 40%, which is very, very upsetting. You could see that in the April 28th meeting. Regarding the studio city election, this is very upsetting, Mr. O'Farrell and Mr. Rue. I know one is running, one just ran. Whenever there's an election, there's different voices that need to be heard. In this case, there were some winners by vote count and then there was an improper challenge that involved, I hesitate to say it out loud, illegal behavior here at the city. And then now they're recasting that very same hearing so that we'll be doubling down on improper conduct. Mr. Richard Llewellyn is the mayor's attorney. I would ask that he address me in the rotunda so that we can be sure that Mayor Garcetti is clear about what he's doing. He met with Lisa Sarkin, the woman who's behind all this, apparently yesterday.
We were going to be bombed November 11th, 2001 in Los Angeles. It didn't happen and we'll be safer if we clean up these moral issues. No more walking and talking guns. No more half of the United States on food stamps. No men raping women. No men with three wives. One half of the women in the United States have children have never been married. A national disaster every eight minutes. If we do not correct the standard for no more 911s, there are worse things that could happen to us, like there's a plane that could get from Los Angeles to New York. It's a Russian plane in 30 minutes. It could carry bombs. The Police Commission may know something about it.
Yes, the meaningless minute, one lousy fucking minute. How proud can you be? But, most of you, when all the black folks were up here, you were in the back. Why? It's obvious why. Because you don't need them. What you need is all those rich campaign donors. No on Mitchell Englander for the Board of Supervisors. No to this criminal. Your ballots are going out, anybody but Englander. Vote for a ham sandwich. Anybody but Englander for the Board of Supervisors because we need him here to steal his $189,000 a year salary so he can listen to the assholes here. He doesn't deserve a promotion. He deserves to sit right here giving us one minute of bullshit public comment.
And your one minute is up. Have a nice afternoon and a nice weekend. Thank you so much. Yes.
Previously, I had asked for item 12 to be continued for two weeks. Could we make that July 1st or after?
Absolutely. And so, we'll be in the Council recess. It'll take us to July...
New fiscal year is what we're looking for.
Great.
Great, thanks.
Done. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Come on up, sir.
Thank you, sir. President, members, Richard Robinson, Neighborhood Organizer. Taxes are the price we pay for civilized society. Sir, recognizing the obvious polarization of political identities today, the argument vis-à-vis the rich versus the poor, the haves versus the nots, have-nots, I say Supreme Court Justice Oliver Wendell Holmes is correct when he says taxes are the price we pay for civilized society. Both former President George Herbert Walker Bush and former President George W. Bush agree that if Trump gets the nomination in Cleveland, they will both vote for Hillary Clinton. Things are changing. Now, we have to recognize that the problems that base the United States of America can be solved, but we need some money. Thank you, sir.
No, thank you. All right, that concludes general public comment. Do we have any announcements, colleagues? Seeing none? Adjourning motion? Yes.
There are motions for posting a referral.
Oh, yes, of course. We'll go ahead and do that as well. Thank you very much. Posted and referred. So now, if we can... Is there anything else?
No, Mr. President. The desk is clear.
If we can ask everybody to please stand for adjourning motions, we ask everybody to please stand for adjourning motions. Thank you very much. Mr. Fuentes.
Great, thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like for us to adjourn in memory of William T. Broaddus. Apostle Broaddus was born on December 1st of 1944 in Portland, Oregon, to the late Dr. Hillary T. Broaddus and Rosa Broaddus. Apostle Broaddus became the overseer of Cavalry Baptist Church in Pacoima on the second Sunday of October 1982 after the home-going celebration of the founding pastor and father, Dr. Hillary T. Broaddus, his father. Apostle Broaddus was the pastor of Cavalry Church in Pacoima for more than 34 and a half years. During his tenure at Cavalry Church, Pastor Broaddus was credited for many accomplishments and to name a few, aside from the establishment of the Cavalry Baptist Christian School, he was also the former teacher of evangelism for the National Baptist Convention layman's movement. He served as first vice president of the American Baptist Black Caucus and he established the Cavalry Community Development Corporation. He is survived by his wife of 36 and a half years and co-pastor Gloria Broaddus. There are five children, Bishop, Teria, April, Reverend Kenneth, and William Broaddus II, and 12 grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. He also leaves behind his three brothers, Hillary, Zidar, and Arthur, and five sisters, Rosita, Marie, Pamela, and Francine. Colleagues, I'd ask that we adjourn in his memory.
Yes, thank you. Do we have any other adjourning motions? Looking to my left, none, and to my right.
Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in somebody special, near and dear to not only me and our entire office but our entire community. There was a legend here in Los Angeles. Today, we adjourn in the memory of Mr. Hollywood High School is what they call him, Dick Rippey. Passed away Saturday, April 30th, in Porter Ranch. Porter Ranch, which he named, by the way, got officially named. Dick Rippey was born in Ventura, California, and on October 15th, 1940, attended Hollywood High School and graduated in 1958. Shortly thereafter, Dick returned to his alma mater to teach, coach several sports, and through the '60s and '70s later became the Assistant Principal, retiring from Hollywood High in 2002. One of Dick Rippey's legacies was taking Hollywood High School to the East Valley Football League Championships in 1975. His other lasting legacy at Hollywood High was creating the Alice Rippey Memorial Scholarship Fund in honor of his late wife. When Dick retired from his career in education, he continued his community work supporting many local organizations, including solid supporters of law enforcement at Devonshire and served on the board of the Porter Ranch Neighborhood Council. Dick's legacy to the Porter Ranch community was establishing an official community of Los Angeles. He led the effort to gather 500 signatures, which is not easy. We have it here and we're going to do something special to memorialize him for that as well. And it was a huge undertaking. He'd spent so much time and effort. It's never easy to name a community, as we all know, particularly when you've got boundaries and everybody wants to be either part of it or they don't want their street cut out of it. And he went door-to-door to everybody just to make sure everybody was on board. He cared a lot about it and he achieved what he set out to do and was at the official ribbon-cutting, sign-placing. He was there for every event. Dick was a strong family man. He was a great student, teacher, coach, administrator, neighbor, and everybody who knew him just loved him. He was infectious and then he was a man of all seasons. He was coaching football, basketball, golf, and was always around for the holiday seasons as well. He's survived by his daughter Kimberly, his son Richard, and his grandchildren. He was loved, very respected, ethical and honest, and just phenomenal to be around. So he will absolutely be missed in our hearts. May he rest in peace. With that, that concludes all the adjourning motions. That concludes Council. As soon as I sign this last one motion that somebody's trying to rush in at the last minute, now we are officially adjourned. Be safe.